Okay, thank you. Right, call me a special meeting of the Kent Board of Selectmen to order July first. Happy July at three P M. So firstly, I want to look at Steve Grant. So. Hold on. So I really listened to what we were talking about before in storm and then all to think and then over the weekend. I think I've been coming. From a perspective I know you guys appreciate. And that partly is, you know, not just that the building is, but isn't going to be used enough. Justified. I mean, one thing for groups occasionally use it or even use it, but is there a way? In which we can incorporate that into the tower and to, you know, for the municipal thing of it, so.
We have Swift House.
Swift House. You know, yeah, okay, we know the community house, but it's Swift House because that was. In my nimble way. And we'll explain as we go with them. Kind of thought, what is some issue we have in town? In general, what do we have is social services and food bank over at the community house? And what is that optimum use for that facility in that space? So I would look back, looked at this and I said, you want to be? It's not so much the use. I mean, I appreciate that the stroke of perfection, but it's the. Can we do something that will keep people in here and actually use it full time? Because I don't want it to be used and then people drift off and then. Do what the board did before, which is start cutting the funding and it just kind of spiraled out to nothing. That's what I understand. That's what the, when I looked at the funding aspect of it, that's similar to what the board of Selectmen did over the years, right? They kept cutting funding.
Oh, just ignore it.
Well, that's what I mean, they love that too, and they just kind of let it go. But if we really want to try to do something with it and take a half million dollars of a steep grant and put it to what could be a good use, still using. The, this is the new order, but still using the space for the meeting space and so on. Potential in actually moving social services into what is the chamber room. Taking out that door. I mean, the specifics can be changed, but not screwing around with ADA on the porch. Because that was an expensive piece to have to do lifts and so maybe move an ADA. Back here, not into the back, but actually opening up the side door. And then again, moving, because we were kind of talking at one point to move. These, you know, accessible entryway to the back.
They never gave us that as a notch.
What, to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's what I'm saying.
We thought that was like a.
We looked at one of those things, I went back, right, and I said, this is what I mean, I did a lot of that this weekend. Had to pack out my, my household goods and I'm going to be. But I did, I was here from noon till like nine o'clock last night. But so. I thought if we did that, you know.
There was, we didn't have to have a lift on the porch, that was just one idea.
Well, unless we.
The very first, the very first idea was to have it.
Yeah.
As a, as a ramp.
But then we would have to lift the whole porch up and that's. You know, you know, it's a costly thing, but again, is lifting it up enough to be higher and then just putting the ramp up around? So we could do that, but if we wanted to leave the porch, you know, even for things like, we can, we can. Bring an entryway through here so that if you have a function here. Your porch could also be part of that function, people could go out.
And people do.
And they do, and they have, right, that's right, so. So that's what I'm saying, I went back to look at all things that I remembered from it, that you guys have talked about, that Sam has been mentioning. So I just said, what if we look to. It's important for the love of, come on in.
You want to come to our boards?
Come on in, come on in, come on in. All the welcome. And so for moving the food bank in here. Now, we have a door, we have a stairs and a door right now currently goes in. Here, but. This is the way it is now. So looking at what we could put in, what that half a million could actually do. Without changing a lot of the different doors and so on. Would be continuous to the entry to the food bank. You could take the stairs out because it really isn't necessary. Move that into a storage. Storage and take the door here and open it up here. For food bank storage and a little. Refrigeration closet kind of thing for freezing and things like that. So you'd have plenty of places to have a center. Display movement all the way around and so on. And then keep, you know, this little big chimney and all that stuff and just open this door. If you want to keep it closed and make this a storage room for, you know, materials. Chairs and so on.
Which is why it's been used.
Yeah, right, it's been used, right, exactly. Or you could do this one. So anyway, so, you know, say I think of an office here and food bank here and, and then meeting rooms and still focus square.
No change.
With the, no, with all the, you know, bottom of the.
But, but where would the people come in for the food banks? Because you would definitely need an accessible entrance for the food bank.
I mean, still.
I volunteered there and they got a lot of.
Sure, they could do that, we could even set up something you could have, we could open this up. In here if they wanted to and just keep a door for the storage and, and, and just lock that door where it is.
I think the problem was that that's not fine.
This one, you laid out it like that, right? And you made, and then that.
And one of Sam's big things was not to get rid of that door because the. Sort of historical significance of this.
Okay, well, they did have a more flexible space, they could come this way. And into, this is a, which you can do, they would just come in here and into. This could be, I mean, that room, that door I overlooked at it, actually, you can do whatever, you can make it as wide as you need to. It's not a load bearing. Going back to this. So, you know, the concept. Again, would be. Full time, full time use, accessibility, increase food bank hours. Do some modifications here, however, you know, it's just my.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, but the whole idea of actually moving and getting used and having it accessible. Redo the, you know, patio or whatever for, you know, for outdoor use. Not having to touch the porch, I'll be against, you know, as necessary. And start this way and then we obviously will do the construction, you know, design, but.
A neat idea. Do we know what, how big this is? What is it saying?
So you get, in looking over there, remember how that? You know, you come in, the food bank, you come in there and you go this way around and there's that room here. And so you have kind of this area and then this area for the food bank. Over and out, so I don't know exactly how much, I didn't get over Friday. But. But again, like I said, if you were to use and take the stairs out, which you really don't need stairs on both sides. But what a, you know, a platform or something up where you can have storage or you can have refrigeration for you. Because, you know, you know, when you walk in food bank, walk in the door here, there's a refrigeration here. And then they've got that walk around into here and so on. And the other part would be actually storage for dry goods and so on. The basement is still, you know, dry enough to store things down there as necessary and it's right here. So it's not like it's a huge, whichever way you wanted to go in. But we can, specifics of how you did it, but I'm thinking. We want to go first deep and I'd be willing to support this, you know, as a steep. Procing this way to, for full time use of the building as well as, you know, meeting rooms and, and other groups to be, what do you think?
Yeah, it's interesting, possible, it might be that you could create like a storage area right there.
Could, if this right now is kitchenette, kitchenette could be ripped out and made into the kitchenette again. So you still have that. For refrigerator, sink and things like that. Because again, we talked about that, how much we really, do we really need a kitchen? You know, that was part of it, I mean.
Didn't need a full kitchen, but there was a belief that there needed to be a kitchenette.
Yeah, I agree, and so this would become, after the, you know, the kitchenette that's here would be updated from food up and. Stay, stay in the kitchenette.
And then the other, the other possibility might be to this area. Whereas this here could become.
It could become a kitchen. Again, moving, it's all about, in kids, you can get, this is the underneath, so you can move your pipes. You don't want to, you know, as much as we, we actually spray foam and clean that up, getting underneath it and pipes is. It's a little bit to bust through and all that, so from here, it's okay.
And we need to have this be.
The door, for social services again.
I guess it's a door here, right?
Well, that's the, it's a wall.
All the was door.
Yeah, well, the door, the wall, it's just a solid wall. But yeah, you can play with that, you can, you know, any way you want to. Or you could, we can even divide this off so that there's a little bit of waiting area, come in, they could still use this as a walk, there's still a door here.
And that door isn't very usable.
Right, you could, I mean, but I would prefer that, you know, come in, again into here and walk in. Yeah, and again, camera and all that stuff to make sure. But again, and they're close to Templeton, close to, you know, the housing, orbital housing.
This, this space seems like it's as big or bigger than what they have right now.
Probably, cut up wise, yeah, but again, they have three people, I mean, they almost always have an intern as well, and Rosemary is different. But they still have, yeah.
And the intern is very part time, too.
She is, yeah, yeah, right, she is, I know the young woman.
And they have the office that they don't use in the senior center.
In that, right, and that would, I think, keep, I think Rosemary is trying to use it now, they're trying to clean up, but. From here to there, it's different than it's from here to walk out, you know, right next door. And then down, and we could look at, you know, we really need to do as a town with the ambulance park. I mean, that whole, and down line, whatever we need to do with the monument, I mean, something changes. But right now, this would allow the monument to stay until something else comes up, right? Without, and they still have access to the porch, you'd probably have to look at parking, I know some, it was, you know. Touchy, but no, 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 I didn't want to put twelve cap cars in, but two, three, four cars, maybe max. Even, you know, drive back behind for the, whatever. An ADA parking to bear, I'm sure we can get that, I think, you know, we've looked at, we've walked it, there's enough to probably put a couple of. Of handicap up and back there again and walk in, so.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is to have handicap over here.
You could do that way, yeah, you could do either way, yeah, exactly, it's what we do here, you know, we've got it right out here, but there's a lot of. So.
I think it's, it's a great idea.
This is a really good idea, so social services will be completely out of this building.
Right, which is really not one room that we don't have, but again, meeting rooms that would open up. Again, another office, meeting room up here, which people have wanted to use. You know, the, we're getting, yeah, we're putting on the, the, you know, kitchen room we use now that we opened up. We moved all the stuff into the new Selectmen's office now. But, you know, we said the other day, it's not good for twenty people, not as better for twenty people upstairs here, but it could be used.
At least we get twenty people in that.
Oh, I'm sorry, exactly, how many, how many down some days? That's right, we did for the, you know.
The Selectmen's meeting is very good for finance.
Yeah, sure, we got a lot of things to do. So, yeah, so.
And the food bank completely out of the community.
Yeah. So at this point, again, it consolidates.
I think we need to make sure that the, the. The spaces, because I'm worried that this space is not as big as what they have.
It could, yeah, that's, and that would be part of it, if we like the idea to go to Steve Grant, we would have, you can combine if you decide. Because you've got plenty of room here, even, you know, even get a bigger room and pop it out if you want to build that wall. It's not a load bearing thing or something, that's a small roof. You could pop it out, and the other part is that part of looking at the cost of it, which, that's my new house. HVAC and all that stuff could all go in at the same time, so we're not having any issue with, you know, weathering. Environmentals and all that stuff. I'll be, especially once.
Do you think we could get that all under five thousand? You were crunching numbers.
Yeah. Well, yeah, some of it, you know, there, there's some, but I think without changing a whole lot of, you know, things like, we're not, you know. We're not moving a whole lot of walls and so on. I think it's, it's pretty close, I think it's, it's pretty close, one floor. We're not touching upstairs at this point, I'm not touching front, we don't have to touch this. The, that's it, that would be, that's just the cost of having to bring it up.
I, I really think we need to look at, we need to compare this to that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because we did talk about it, we went back and forth. What was the right thing to do, and part of the pro of using the porch entrances. Everybody's using the main entrance together.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not that second, you know, second class citizen.
Yeah, also we have a town hall, really. ADA is here, it's not up for.
I know, but, but people are using, it also has to do with why are people coming into the building? And so many people, when they come in for a meeting, are coming in, using the ADA accessibility, so it doesn't feel the same.
Yeah, yeah, and for us, which we do get a lot of social services with folks who are a little older and, and less ambulatory. Yeah, they may just make it, so whatever, but yeah.
But I mean, it, it actually might make more sense to go this way.
Yeah.
But then you have people having to go all the way through the food bank.
Potential kitchenette if you wanted, or, or, or increase the storage up on the wall here and just have it, you know, they get this way in and out. Well, it's, it's all can be, but if we want to, again, it's, right, you know, our, our goal right here is to. Focus where we're going to go on a steep, the specifics we can, we can work and we can look at the cost and we can, you know, do all that evaluation and actually get the. When we get someone in to actually start pricing someone's for us, we've used. Joyce, who did you use over the, the community house again, just to get?
Tim Sneller.
It's not, I'm sorry, Tim, so, you know, general, kind of have to come in and give you some ballpark figures and then. At least we have, we know as we get, that'd be right, right, we could get Tim or someone like that to come in and, and take a look at some of these ideas.
Yeah, I'm sure he'd be happy to help.
But anybody who gets the job to do this has to, they have to pay prevailing.
Perfilling wage, oh yeah, the rules are quite specific, I mean, so, yeah, that would be bid out, so, I mean, that's, and, and Tim. Knows that, you know, prevailing wages and stuff like that, some of the costs, most, most buildings, they were the one, I don't, I don't challenge this for sure. What it costs, but if, you know, I think it's, I didn't, you know.
How, how does social security, social services, how do they feel about all those?
Have you gone to all the specifics? Again, it was over the weekend and she's on a P T O today, so we'll certainly talk, I don't think it'd be. I mean, just in general, how big, she wants to get more involved, I don't. If you have objections, we can, we'll certainly entertain and listen to her, but it's been very memorable when we tried to, when we did move around in the, into the back end. Where she had more room, I actually appreciated that, but, but here it's the same thing, if she's able to get to.
So close to the, I've seen, close to teleporting to the senior center.
And the food, you know, all the places that, that they move around, yeah, it's, it's kind of nice to have that, again, you're right. Using that office in senior center, cleaning that up, that would be helpful. And the other part is that, you know, the storage is. You know, for senior, senior service services, they deliver a lot of stuff during the week, ends up sitting in front of the town hall, because that's where he gets over right now, that's where they're all business. So we're constantly moving it around, it would sort of be on. I mean, it's just a small aside, but, but there's enough, if they need to, you know, paper towels, toilet paper. Now, it's. Sam put in more and received, and I'm going to paraphrase it terribly, but there's a program. Getting confused with Stephen or the acronym, but actually it expands their ability to get to states. Purchase foods and planning and expands the amounts and stuff like that, the types, that's something that we get in, yeah, she wanted to wait a little bit before it was, you know, announcement. Big time, although it's been talked about, but she did a good job of that, just again, will expand some of the offerings. So again, you know, looking at however you wanted to do that and expand that. Most of that's just, it's moving the, you know, roof line and all that kind of stuff, again. We're not, we're not talking anything specific, couldn't have done.
And then if a group wants to, to rent the space, it's still fairly self-contained.
Yeah, everything closes up for the office space, while they still have it, all the ADA porch, I mean, yeah, functions that, that would be there, even, you know, to the outside, so. Depending wherever the ADA was best way to go, but it's this way or that way.
So this will be its pressure in this building.
Well, with pressure, for the pressure, it opens up, you know.
Yeah, and it opens up that, it opens up that basement in the community house for different things.
Which is what Joyce has been talking about trying to do, and they fix those rules up, kitchen all night, yeah, so, yeah. There's potential, I did run this by, or actually, we talked about this a little bit on Friday. When we were talking about the idea and then she said, well, here's the plan, go for it. But anyway, but, no, you know, and then this. Again, gives a function to the building, which is really what I was always trying to figure out, trying to push and work the right use of this, I didn't, I really didn't want it to go into part time again. Yeah. You know, whereas, again, also in two weeks if something happens, a window gets cracked, leak happens, which, you know, happened the other day, right?
People being their regular relationships.
People that regularly, yeah, and the functional, you know, when that happen, well, you know, give us. A chance to do this and, and then down the line, we'll look for, for, for pointing to whatever else the building needs, you know, and, and so. But showing the, this interest, our investment state, I think, will look for it. It has the, you know, dealing with a senior population, dealing with social services, food bank. Historical purposes, meaning all, all those things that you look at Steve Grant.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would make it more attractive to the state, yeah.
And I did talk to Marie Horn, we shared a couple of notes over the weekend, I'm going to meet with her, so start the process going. I mean, I haven't, I mean, we've talked here and there and with some others, but I've kind of concentrated on trying to get to understand the town before I bring things to other folks. Well, yeah, because, you know, there's some that we've had conversations about in general, but I think it's time now that when we, that we start being more of an advocate for Kent. And I need to do that, it's my job and part of my job, my job specifically is first likely to get out. And Marie has always been very, you know, open to all that, you know, she's a, a, a great asset for our town and our area, so. Yeah, I'm sure you'll get on that. Pitching our, our area, so. So that's.
I hope one day you're both going to be in the dump tank on the thirteenth.
I kind of said, yeah, yeah, if it's a hot day, I'll be happy to, so, yeah.
Yeah, I hope it's, I hope it's not cold, so I did that. Ooh, a long time ago, I got fire in the spare.
And obviously, you think before I did it, the whole, I think with, I think it was baseball coaches back, or football, Raps football, I think, yeah, they did that in the toy warehouse.
I certainly don't want to speak for the Swift House Task Force as a whole, but I. We meet and talk about this, I'm sure this will be very.
So. But I think in that, in that regard, it's time for the board of selectmen to make the move forward, and we've heard a lot of things that, you know, the specifics. Are, yeah, you guys certainly have an input as a task force, but it's really.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but I think if we're going to put in this deep, you'll meet there, but this is a serious one. This is a serious one, and this is what we were talking about the other night.
You know, yeah, there's a lot of things we need to do, but I don't, I don't like the idea of having to split it, everybody I've talked to is going to. It would drop one and then also we have half of what we sort of need and then we're, you know, then we get double floor, we'll get the next. So focusing around that, you know, we could use the, the community house, we could even use it on town hall, but.
I think, I think you really should start planning for next year's community house, Steve Grant, though.
Yeah, well, we will.
Because Joyce is already down how to pull some of the flooring and stuff. But I mean, that totally makes sense to me that, you know, not, not the same as people, I'm going to apply.
Not all of that was a.
That's right.
Like that's sort of a play off.
Gee, that's sad.
Um, but yeah, I think, you know, it's.
That, and I'll be ranting and. You know, the idea of down the line, the ship of works and anything else on National Park works as well, great, but. Just what we saw with, with what's going on with ship on the state, I'm sure we can wait any longer if we're going to do this.
Well, but the reality is we missed the deadlines for this year already.
Right, oh, yes.
Because I mean, when I was, went back and looked, I was like, why didn't they tell us that?
Yeah.
But there's precedence for this, I mean, both the community house and Swift have received Steve Grant's in the past. And for this potential ones, and, and we have, you know, it's not a given that you're going to get a Steve Grant certainly. But, but we have received Steve Grant's back tack in, 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 you know, a year or so, so if we wanted to pursue one for the community house next year. Good, nothing's backwards, that might be a future question from the last time, so.
Yes, and, and we should say on our ad to Barbara.
For doing the research and emailing us all that factual information, that was huge.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, and, and. And I'll give the shout out to Joyce because she kind of encouraged me to open up, let me look at some other things, so that was, yeah.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you, Joyce.
Very good, you know, good here, and down the line, you know, we will have to go obviously to town from Steve Grant, that's. But we were going out of the way, anyway, I think. Going in this direction, we have a better explanation for the town as well, and we're together as a board. I don't. I'm much improved, well, it's worse about financing, but, yeah.
Yeah, but you're solving a lot of issues.
This checks off a lot of.
And it catches you before, like, too, which again, is back and forth, I, you know, with.
This, this is a solid.
Food bank and, you know, so, okay, right, so. Can I get a move forward, a motion to move forward with our ultimate developing a seed grant for the Swift House?
I don't make it.
You hear the motion, you hear that?
Okay, I shall make a motion, uh, so I'll make a motion for the town to head to pursue a steep grant of five hundred thousand dollars. For renovations of the Swift House, or is that twenty?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Two, well, two thousand and twenty four, it's going to be twenty five.
Second.
Okay.
Is that specific enough?
Is that specific enough?
I, I had a whole other.
I think motion Joyce, Facebook, Silver Purchase, I don't know if we would base it on that or not.
I think that again is to where we need to move forward with the, with the Steve Grant, there's going to be, obviously, more, but Juice, I think that covers it, correct?
I caught most of it, I had somebody here, so it sounded okay.
I think that's fine, that's our focus, or, of course, like, we will be towards Swift House, I think, and for five years out, we got two boards. Funding the money, or the focus is the money, I think, so.
It's the deadline.
Um.
I remember you guys.
Yeah, it's like, eight, tenth, somewhere.
July seventh or something.
We're still waiting for all the state to give us all the particulars on this, you have to, they move up, that's the, the word anyway, it's coming in around that, so that will be prepared to go that, that way. So. Okay.
And we'll also include that, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, ADA, oh, yeah, no, ADA is probably, it's a baseline, where we go ADA, that's a baseline for that, yeah, that'll be part of it as well.
Well, thanks, thanks to you, and thanks to Joyce, and Barbara, thank you, I mean, that's, that was a lot of. Want to bring that there.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, thank you, yeah, thank you. All right, we have forms appraisal policy. So we just had to really knock down the process, I took yours and I added and kind of. Parse exactly what we want to do with this year, so we read it to you and then, and then see, all right, this will be the policy of performance objective appraisal review process. Any town can employ, not in the union, and subject to, or to get an appraisal evaluation process. Define who wasn't, you know, part timers and. You know, who declines to participate will not be eligible for any performance salary award. This policy also covers the special board selection ninety day review process for the F Y twenty twenty five salary review process.
To add on.
Yeah, and that's, because that's ninety day, I wanted to, it gives it that specificity for that, as well as anything else in the future. You know, that kind of opens up for any salary, if you don't participate. You're not necessarily, you have to be so.
So did I just hear you verbally say this doesn't apply to part timers?
Well, there was some, remember, we, we talked about who actually, like, seasonal, some seasonal, you know.
Yeah, but, but there are part timers.
Well, there are, there are, it just says those who are not eligible or not to. And not in union and, and who are subject to, mostly in deposit, those who are subject to it, which we've defined who are the.
Where have we defined that?
We did in the, well, last meeting, actually, in, in our discussion of the, the program. And we can define who they are, I can.
I think that we should have that in writing.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
You know. Because that way.
The policy is okay, and then we'll define what the policy actually applies, so I think we can do that.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know.
So give me, give me a chance to.
Boys know who applies to and who.
Right, you know, the union players do that, and then those, all those other players who are eligible, are, are. I'm reading it again, any town can employ, not in a union, and subject to, which we'll define who is subject to it, we can do that in that special meeting, I think we'll go through. Who, because we're talking about some of the, the summer camp and the A S P, maybe we could include that as well, talk to Matt.
No, we talked about not doing seasonal help.
Right, some seasonal, right, which is like.
Not doing, yeah, so like, if. In, in the same way, if, if Rick hired somebody for seasonal help. That person would be. But I mean. After the program, you had said, that's the non-seasonal, that's the job.
Correct, correct, I said, and I, that's like, I said, you know, like the summer, so summer camp is eight weeks. Summer camp director.
That's seasonal.
That's seasonal. The same individual does the A S P, that's over the, you know, month period, so, right, so those, so I said, so the A S P would. Summer director, camp director would not.
That's you.
So I think, you know, and, and again, in our next one, we'll have all those different departments, anyone that has someone that's part time or whatever. That's something to add, so, I mean, there's, you know, Jimmy works in the accessory one day a week, Monday. But he doesn't all get along.
He counts.
He is counting. But they're going to say, well, he won't be a week, but, but he's specific, you know, he's like.
Doesn't really matter how many hours you work, it's more about, you know, what is your job.
So, okay, so what I'll do, if we read this policy at our very next meeting, I will list all those people.
I'll make a motion to approve this policy as.
Okay, I'll second that, okay, right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I'm good.
Great, do that. Any public care to come? Great, do that. Um, any public care to come?
And be aligned.
Okay, hearing done and, um. Wish you a journey. So, great, excellent, all right. All right, your turn, thank you.